Hello, please settle. We're about to start. Okay, the 50th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. In vocation by Councillor, Honorable Councillor Suset Magtahas Daba, followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinirang, the Nkagayan di Oro March. Please rise.
Let us put ourselves in the Holy Presence of the Lord, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for having this privilege of serving our city. We pray, Father, that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our city, we will always put the people's interests above our own. Remind us, Father, that we are in this position not to be served, but to serve the public, just as Christ, who is King, came not to be served, but to serve, and ultimately die on the cross to save us. We also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. In the name of the Father, of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councillors: Honorable Agapito Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger J. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Goaking, Honorable Jose P. P.S. Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councillors: Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imanu, Honorable Maria Lourdes Isgañi, Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-Official Members: Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay President, and Honorable John Michael El Seno, City East Coast Federation President. There is Korom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Korom is hereby certified. Before we proceed, we have three celebrants for August. The same way with me. We have Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu, and Councillor Romeo Calizo. Let us all sing. Who's going to lead the song, birthday song? Kasi gusto mo mga volunteer. Tulobayat ni. Huh? Okay, Bernie, you lead the song? Okay. Make sure that you will have your...
It's my honor, Madam Chair.
Make sure imo dedikasyon ah para's tulog.
My request, request her by to please stand for our beloved birthday celebrants. Wait kuwan ika ng passionate ni kapag nagawa ni. Alright, everybody, let's sing. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster! Happy birthday to... Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Emotional! Ha... Oh, na, 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 na. Happy birthday, Councillor Joey Abu, Councillor Romeo Calizo, and Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Okay, please be seated. How old are you? Anyway, anyway, I'm Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Attorney. Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Vice Mayor B. Rodriguez, members of the 20th City Council, our guests, who are with us, members of the media and our people, who are watching us in their individual social platform. Madam Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council on August 7, 2023, and consider the harnessing thereof as reading itself.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve the said minutes.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
On the special report portion, Madam Chair, we have three reporters who will be reporting on the different issues. Councillor James Judith, on the cutting of trees at Divisoria. Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, with regards to the sacrilegious acts of Mr. Pura Luca Vega, real name Amadeus Fernando Pahinte, and also Councillor Roger Abadai, who will be reporting on the...
African Swine?
Ah, Africania, A-A-A, African Swine, A-A-A...
ASF.
Ah... But before that, Madam Chair, may I request the Honorable Chair to recognize the members of the City Council to recognize the visitors that we have this afternoon. We have the candidates for Miss Little Mindanao, who are together with their parents, and may I request, Madam Chair, that the founder and creative director, Mr. Randy Palumar Salcedo,
Okay, founder, Mr.?
Allow to lead the candidates. And also, we have here the first pleasure of Mindanao Crazy Ultramarathon. 700 kilometers of running. That's 700 kilometers, that's 10 times going around Camigin Island.
So, sa manakadugaya, Councillor, kamarasoner, mga ka from here to 10,000.
That's here to... Dabaw and bak.
Aku'y gin... Kalisun, bedenya na.
Dabaw and bak. Ah, bitaw, Madam Chair. I think the Marasona spent several days from June 20... June 28 to July 6. So that's it this, it this. Ah, Mr. Staff Sergeant Arnold P. Andilav, for SIMO Battalion, for ID Philippine Army.
Sir, are we going?
May I request for the suspension of the rule.
Okay, rule suspended. Yes, we'd like to, Mr. What's the name again? The founder, the Miss...
The Miss.
Miss Mindanao. Mr.?
Mr. Randy Salcedo.
He's going to be the fir... Ah, okay, Mr. Randy Salcedo, yes, you are here. You are recognized?
Yes, my... Um, good afternoon, Vice Mayor. To the council, it was a great honor for giving us opportunity to be part of your session. And I would like to introduce and I would like to invite every one of you on our grand coronation on August 19, and that will be at Limkitkay Center Mall. And the search for Little Miss Mindanao Beauty Pageant will be launched this coming August, and the first ever search in Nkagayan di Oro. Nkagayan di Oro will be our host city in partnership with Limkitkay Center Mall as our official venue partner and major presenter. The Little Miss Mindanao is a celebration during the fiesta and tourism month, and it is a perfect pageant beauty contest for little girls between ages of 8 to 12 years old. And it's an opportunity for the parents to take pride in their children, to boost the confidence in their little ones. So this is a beauty, brain, and beauty pageant. So formally, the talent is also. So that will be on August 19, and if you have time, and I would like to invite every one of you to come and witness our grand coronation. This is the first ever. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, yes. Our candidates.
Let me introduce to you our candidates from candidate number 1 to 30. Okay.
Mabuhay! I am Ana Lea Resmilia, 9 years old, from City Hopes, Opal, Miss Samis Oriental. I believe in the saying that goes, "If not now, then when?" And my advocacy is the heart for the children, because a happy heart is a key to success. So let's do it now, for Mindanao!
Candidate number 2.
Good afternoon, everyone! I am Clavizil Shaam F. Diete, 9 years old, from the municipality of Opal, province of Miss Samis Oriental.
Candidate number 3.
Good afternoon, everyone! I am Donna Jovan D. Baranovic. I am 9 years old, and where I live is Makasandig Zone 4, Tipasak. And I also represent barangay, Nkagayan di Oro City, Miss Samis Oriental.
Candidate number 4.
Good afternoon, everyone! My name is Princess Joanna M. Abirgenya. I am 8 years old, representing barangay, Block, Nkagayan di Oro City. And I thank you!
Candidate number 4. Candidate number 5.
Good afternoon, people of City of Golden Friendship, especially to our Vice Mayor, Honorable Joseline Rodriguez, and to all our municipal consellers. And... And I'm Ginuan Imi Sumanda, 8 years old, proud Higa Unan tribe, from Plaridel, Claveria, Miss Samis Oriental. But I represent the hometown of my mom, Tdala, Miss Samis Occidental. And I thank you!
Candidate number 6.
Good day, everyone! My name is Marquesha Rochelo Mayes Pamisa, 11 years of age, representing barangay, Bugo.
Candidate number 7.
Hello, everyone! My name is Dionne Ikaninya Tiha Daudarbe, 8 years old, from barangay, Agusan, and I thank you!
Candidate number 9.
Good afternoon, everyone! My name is Krista Jane Rolona Almeida, 9 years old, representing barangay Nazaret, a child-friendly awardee city, Nkagayan di Oro. Thank you!
Candidate number 10.
Good afternoon, everyone! I am Siseyan Princess Abonido, 9 years old, from Baongon, Bukinon.
Candidate number 12.
Hi, everyone! My name is Kusalu Esdeleon, 10 years old, from barangay, Kauswagan, and I thank you!
Candidate number 13.
I am Jacinta Laurie de Bacon, 8 years old, from Grandia, Opal, Lumbia, Nkagayan di Oro City.
Candidate number 14.
Hello, everyone! My name is Chanya Fides iOngos, 9 years old, from Bugo, Nkagayan di Oro City.
Candidate number 15.
Hello, everyone! This is your small but terrible, Nettlekill Sagarael Fuentes, 8 years old, representing from the city of Mercy and Savior, El Salvador City. And I believe that reaching your dreams are not impossible, and I thank you!
The next candidate.
Hi, everyone! Good day! I am Shereen Kylie W. Tate, candidate number 16, for Little Miss Mindanao 2023 Beauty Pageant, 9 years old, from Kauswagan, Nkagayan di Oro City.
Candidate number...
I believe that a true beauty queen has a great sense of attitude with strong leadership, with a heart that embraces everything for being unique, and I thank you!
Candidate number 17.
Hello, everyone! My name is Sophia Kit S. Layah. I am 9 years old, and I am proud to represent the municipality of Opal, Miss Samis Oriental.
Hello, everyone! My name is Michaela Chanel O. Castro, 10 years of age, and proudly representing the Kasui capital, barangay, Lumbia!
Candidate number 19.
A pleasure afternoon to you all! I am Lisa Julian Pibakonga, 11 years of age, and proudly representing upper Carmen, Nkagayan di Oro City. And to our honorable Vice Mayor, Joseline Bebat Rodriguez, and to our honorable Consellers, I am inviting all of you to watch our grand coronation night at Limkitkay Rotonda from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at August 19, Saturday. And we must remember to aim high and hit the mark.
Candidate number 20.
Good afternoon, everyone! My name is Ella Pulin Lamatan, 12 years old, and representing Pagapat, Nkagayan di Oro City.
Candidate number 22.
Greetings, everyone! I am Catherine Kate Wyarera, 12 years of age, your Little Miss Mindanao candidate number 22, representing upper Palulang, Nkagayan di Oro City. A proud Mindanaoan, topong Nkagayanon, atonibay, and I thank you!
Candidate number 24.
Hi, everyone! My name is Janelle... Janelle Taya T. Delaso, 12, representing Alubihid.
Candidate number 25.
Good afternoon, everyone! I am Gina Saal Gudshanes Quetta, your Little Miss Mindanao candidate 25. My beautiful smile and confidence is a reflection of where I live, representing home valacious Ipunan, Nkagayan di Oro City.
Candidate number 26.
Tatya Hao, Tatya Tiao Hao. Good afternoon, everyone! Poisir, Princess Zaya Namok, representative barangay 15, from the city of Golden Friendship, Nkagayan di Oro City. Yes, yeah, Tatya, thank you, everyone.
Candidate number 27.
Hi, everyone! Good afternoon! My name is Priyana Nichi Pibuniao, 11 years old, representing Buwa, Nkagayan di Oro City. Basta Buwa, kulba, and I believe in the saying of... Beauty is not from the outside, it is in the inside, and that is intelligence, kindness, and respect. Thank you.
Candidate number 28.
Hello, I am Fatima Jin Tsori. I am 10 years old. I am candidate 28 of Little Miss Mindanao, and I believe that the good... that beauty is not just on the outside, but on the mind, heart, and of course, the soul. Thank you.
Candidate number 29.
Hello, everyone! My name is Isabel Sofia Pivalyar, 11 years old, from Ipunan, Nkagayan di Oro City.
Thank you very much. So these are the complete candidates. We are absent, no, the gun absent. But anyway, from 194 applicants, so maonis sila ang nakapasara. So we trimmed down to 30. Thank you so much.
Okay, let us have the Consellers have a photo op.
Yes, thank you very much.
And Consellers, Be. Forward, forward. Dayon ang mga... Okay. Sa likod at mga Consellers, peripugatay ni James sa ilam, or pariyara maghaid. Makita mo. Come here, come here, closer, closer. Come here, closer. Closer. Patungtungu na lang kani. Padap, please, ang mutagas. Ang mga tagas, palihog lang, sa kilid. Di man manglihok. Huh? Oh, anto na lang. Ipaanto na lang. Ako na lang, dere. Anto matubangan. Kaya makita lang. Sige. Dito na. Sige. At tubangan, at tubangan. At tubangan. Okay, thank you! Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Wala pa. Dito rin sa kuwan. Sa filmso, diba? Oh, katuna, katuna.
Madam Chair, I mean, eh, may we-
Okay.
As be, uh, Mister-
Okay, let us proceed to the, uh, to the marathoner who won. Mister-
Staff Sergeant Andilab.
Sergeant? You have the floor.
No.
Yeah. Okay, you can have the, you have the floor. Staff Sergeant, you have the floor.
Um, may ngapon, ma'am, vice. May ngapon, uh, may ngapon all city councilor, may ngapon. I'm Staff Sergeant Andilab. Uh, I'm a member of one city runner. I'm representing seven-hundred-kilometer run ultramarathon. It is, uh, Mindanao Crisi Ultramarathon. Sa kuwan pa, dula daw sa mga buwang, ma'am, kay crazy man. So natapos ako siya, one-hundred-seventy-four hours, one week.
One week?
Uh, nagstart me, uh, from Dabau People's Park. Natapos me, Dabau People's Park, Tuoyuk, uh, from Dabau, Bukidnon, Cagayan, Amisamis Oriental, Butuan, Agusan di Norte, Agusan di Sur, Dabau di Oro, to City, Dabau City na dayon. Moraw na kuwan, ma'am. Anggi proud ko nga, nadala ako ng Cagayan, Cagayan di Oro. Akor man isanagapil Cagayan di Oro kay, mauna akong third na long na dagan from four-hundred kilometers, Marawi Dabau, then Dabau, D R U, Dabau Regional Ultramarathon, full Dabau, Upatka Province, Samuangituyuk, five-hundred-twenty kilometers. So karoon, mauna pinakataas longest footrace sa Philippines, the seven-hundred kilometers. So I'm proud sa kuwan, Cagayan di Oro, from City of Golden Friendship.
Congratulations, uh, Staff Sergeant. Imo, councillor, pila ka kuwan ang imo madaganan sa marathon.
Seven meters lang ako.
Seven kilometers.
You sure?
Okay, let's have, uh-
A picture, right?
Yes, yes, uh, all candid, Staff Sergeant, dirita sa taas, oh, picture na sa- Army. Tumukundan ka, matulog. Subod na sa tabi. Unay gusunod. Pila makabumanggabantay. Ha? Tulog. Mo man imusunod. Ay, buta na lang start, oh. Abila kabuy runner. Hey, na ay. Runner, dito na pa. Dito na, yung klobanatang sayo, diba? Wala na, hindi, wala na, hindi kuwan. Ha, nainmo, pero wala na kuman. Dito na, unang. Wala dyan, dali sa oras na wala tao. Okay. Congratulations. Congratulations. One week? Okay, thank you very much. Councillor, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
So that we proceed to the special report. Uh, Madam Chair, may we request that Councillor James Judith be here. And then after him, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, and then last, Councillor Abadai.
Uh, may I request Councillor Attorney James Judith, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, sa atong tinahod, halangdung BC Mayor Jocelyn Bebop Rodriguez, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Edgar Cabanlas, atong mga tinahod ng mga kauban sa konseho, mga bisita, membro sa prensa, o ang atong pinanggang katauhan sa nakbayan sa Cagayan di Oro sa inyong tanan, maupay. Madam Chair, dili palang dugay, natuki, nato dinisawanan sa atong konseho, kabahin sa gibuhat, o sa kacontractor, nga ni Ani, ugbatiko, supagsaway sa mga netizen, sa social media, o sa atong mga pipila kakatawan dinis sa nakbayan sa Cagayan di Oro, kay ang giin monini, sa pagpamilay, o pagpamutol, sa pipila ka mga punuan diya, sa gitawag na to, ng Magsay Say Park, nga naadiya, nagbarog karoon, ang moderno, o bago, ngagambalay sa O K K. Tungod kay ang maong contractor, ni subay man sa patakaran, sa pagpamutol, bali sa buhatan, sa D N R, o nakakuha man, o termite. O, matunpa, kay kanunay mang punong, magkakaukang ang ilang concrete overlay, o mga papers black na ilang gibutang, o kay dagko namampod ang mga gitawag na to gamot sa mga punuan, ilan na lang puno tong gibamutol. Atong gisabot, nalatag nagdagan kyaokyaok reaction gikan sa atong konseho, apan baguay palamang, Madam Chair. Naay nagpadangat kanato sa ilang problema, or kabala ka, ang mga pipila ka mga residente dinis sa atong dakbayan, kay basinong niya ako ng magmatan nalatag morning, naupaw na, or napilayan na, nagipangpilay na ang kining gitawag na to mga punuan diya, ng mga karaan. Diya agyod sa kining naay monumento nga nagbarog, nga sa ubos ng bahay naay marca El Pueblo Jesus Hiroes, o niya, ni sandwich niya sa establishmento sa Mercury Drive, o kini the United of D D O. Ang ilang kabala ka maokini, Madam Chair. Kay dili mata basta-basta nga, mo dawat lang, o regla mo, ako mismo, nagsusigod. Ngitanaw na ako, ngatino't, kay ng mga gipat, dala sa akong mga hulagway, Boss Torch, nagipakita karoon ni Boss Torch, na agi dinumero na agyod bali ang mga punuan. Nagpasabot, nga kini sa timailhan, nga putlo nono na putni. Ako, maayaw ang konsepto, nasaptan ako maayaw konsepto kay, kini suklip mani sa kinatibokan konsepto na green space na concept sa gitawag na to Project Lunhow. Apan na nga akong dakong katingalaan ni Madam Chair, kay kung green space ang katuyuan sa Project Lunhow, ngaano man ang contractor, siki magpamilay sa mga punuan na karaan diya, nga tipik na sa atong kasaysayan. Mas kigani, ako saksi nga, kining mga punuan, naan na diya, mas kie elementarya pa ko, naghigh school, nagcollege, naggraduar na lang ako skoleo, o nahimo akong abugado, mauna man na akong nakita ng mga punuan. Kay dili basta-basta magpatubo, bali, o tanong. Inani lang, Madam Chair. Dili, gusto na to masairan, kung pila ba dey git kabuhok ang ipamilay sa mga contractor. Diya rabaka sila tamat? Kay abinato dito sa first module, karoon kini taput na sila sa second module, na unumbayak kamujo sa dibisoria. Malaras lugan ni mga punuan sa kining bisoria, ipamutol tungod, o matunpa, konsepto bali sa Project Lunhow. Ang agoan ni Madam Chair, dili ba dey pwede nga kitaimo ajas sa mga punuan, kay sa mga punuan mo kajas balikan ato. Dili ba dey na to pwede matweak, di ba dey na to pwede matuis ang atong disenyo sa atong Project Lunhow. Sa atong konsepto, kung unsa'y rehabilitar na to dibisoria, dili ba dey pwede mahimunin anak. Oo, nagpasalik ang contractor. Ngaila ko ng hulipan, ang ilang ipamilay ng mga punuan. Apan kano sa pamantaw na matubo, mga matay na lang takining kining henerasyon, mga wala na lang kita, ay, apan na to matilawan. Kung unsa magyod ang landong nga ihatak ang mga punuan. Ang ago lang, kung mahimo lang, mabalansi. Di ba pwede nga atong pangita agpa maagi? We built around these trees, rather than for the trees to, to be considered as an obstruction sa ato na disenyo? Mahimo man ato, dani, sa kining punto, Madam Chair, madumduma na ko ang, nahimo na ko ng mentor, nga o sa kabanggiitan, ng abugado sa dakbayan, o gusto pa kainin lang ang local environmentalist, nga si Attorney, Anhing Attorney, Maning Rabanera, Kunman Rabs. Kay sa unang igayong na nakatuko sa iyang buhatan, iyang law office, extension manas sa iyang karaan nga panimalay diya sa may patag. Ako nabantayan, Madam Chair, sa tunga-tungang bahay ng gitsiang law office, na karaan kaayong ng punuan sa akasya. O niya, ako siyang ipamutana, unsa may history o kasaysayan sa mga punuan. Matunpa niya, sa pagtukod kunin niya sa iyang law office, na ingon daw kunin iyang mga panday, nga mapugos, gido kunin sila pagpilay sa iya bali kanang daan bali ng punuan, kay sa gabal kunokotin ko, sa gabal kuno, sa pagtukod nila sa iyang law office. Pagkasayod, Attorney Rabanera, Anhing Attorney Rabanera, giba't lung niya iyang mga panday, miingon siya nga ayaw. Undangan ka na, o kung dili, pangita mo pa maagi o diskarte, nga you built around the tree. Kay kitaimo ajas, pangita, bagong disenyo, nga para pagbutang sa akong law office, dili ang pilayon ato, ang ato bali kining karaan ng punuan, para mo ajas sa disenyo sa law office. Kining ng butang, kapanalaminan na tong tanan. Ang ayay na to, huno na on, dili, dili basta-basta ang magtanong. Dili basta-basta kining mga punuan. Wala pa tingin niya nagsupak sa Project Lunhow, pero kung mahimo, pwede pa mabalansi na to. Pwede pa na to ni masturyahan. Pwede pa na to mausap ang atong disenyo matuis, para lang nga naay balansi sa kalambuan, sa pagrehabilitar na to, sa Magsay Say Park, o sa pagpamilay, patun, kung mahimo magpabilin, kining mga karaan ng mga punuan diya. Madam Chair, at this juncture, I therefore move that this matter be referred to the Joint Committees on Environment, Tourism, and Public Works. Sa katapusan nga bahin, Madam Chair, kini la, tuguti ako sa pagpaambit kaninyo sa pipila kalinya gikan sa balak ni Joyce Kilmer, nga naguluhan trees. Matunpa niya. I think I shall never see a poem lovely as a tree. Dayon, nakaba na to pipila kalinya, dito sa tungang bahin, inyo siya. Di, nakaba na na to, kay di man pwede, Madam Chair.
A tree, huso.
Sa sa tunga-tunga kalinya, matunpa niya, "A tree that looks up at God all day and lifts its lippy arms to pray." Nakaba na sa na to pipila kalinya, Madam Chair. Dito sa katapusan nga bahin, inyo siya. Ah, inyo siya nga. Poems are made by fools like me.
But only-
But only God can make a tree.
Can make a tree.
Di nila kukuto, Madam Chair, dagang salamat, o Asdan, Cagayan di Oro.
Thank you very much. This was brought to the committee, right? Sa committee, how many trees were really cut? That's a pakakaron. Doha, talo? Upat? Yes, Councillor Roger Abadai?
Dagang salamat, um, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bebop Rodriguez, my colleagues in the Twentieth City Council, and all people who are watching and listening us today. With regards to the special report of, uh, Councillor Asdan James, wala man siya magkaapil sa, ambot, meeting tong last committee meetings sa environment. With regards to the special report of Councillor Nakaya, now, we invited Clean Row, uh, Sinrow, Inetao, and D N R, and Project Lunhow during the meeting. Now, the cutting of the trees, including the contractor of that, uh, project, no? The contractor, before cutting all those trees, uh, he seek advice from the three, uh, offices, Clean Row, Sinrow, Inetao, and Lunhow. So, these three agencies had a conference and meeting, they evaluated or ba, they inventoried all the trees that to be cut, including tongi post ni Councillor Judith, no? Wala lang ko maka, dala tong kuwan, ambot lang na baik kapis sa atong kuwan, but anyway. So, before the contractor cut all those trees, it was with the permission of the three, uh, agencies, nga pwede, pwede na putlon, kay ano man? Ang kining ng tree, kining tree diya usah tawag nga, kan-
Mahoganitri?
Mahoganitri. This is an African tree. Di Tunisia sa mga North American, isang gamat, tubo niya siya. Now, fifty years, pagabot sa fifty years nga kahoy, mo dekay Indonesia, ang iyang gamot mo approve, approve nya, dili ka, mga hulog ng, di mga, mga seeds, o mga bali ang kuwan na, anis taktid to, kuwan, dekay. So, dili, para lugar sa kuwan, para nila, it's not, uh, conducive for that area, labina kay plaza, maglingkod-linkod ka diya, maagga, mga sakyanan, daganan ng hulogan sa sanga, kana ng park diya. And most, kuwan, diyan, disaster kay, ang iyang gamot mo approve naman, ang atong mga, kung ang, Ang iyang gamot mo approve naman, ang atong mga kanang, kanang flooring, flooring, flooring. Guba ang atong kuwan, so imagine how many trees. So, dili na magamit ang atong plaza for that purpose para kawayanan kay maglikay ka naman o hulogan ka ba diya. So, there was a kuwan, but they recommended it to the Sin Row. Although admittedly, wala pa sila maka issue permit to cut kay namay balao. Gabe, before cutting the trees, you have to ask permit from the DNR. But it was the agreement of the three offices or agencies that those trees are to be cut because of that purpose of project. So, katung uban nga kahoy nga kuwan, tungkan ang nara. Wala di pressure blank, kanalang yung mahoganitri kay dili advisable giya itanom siya diya sa plaza kay parking. Tapos place for diya kamupaulay mas delikado. So, wala yod mayo pagka siguro, wala mayo pagka plano nga, kanabring kahoy diya para diya no? So anyway, history or cultural history or, or we call that, tawag na ng history, kanang kahoy na mga dugay na. Or heritage, it is between the test of heritage and public safety. So which is higher now to be, it is our preference. Ipabili ni muna nga heritage or concern about the public safety of the public who is using that heritage. That's the update Madam Chair.
So how many trees are they going to cut again because of safety? How come these engineers have been studying engineering? They have been studying construction o gunsa pa? Can they do something about it? Muna akong point, unless mo shortcut ka, okay? Because we have been seeing buildings nga namay mga kahoy, but they do something about it. We cannot just do shortcut with trees for me. Mauna nga, you told me that ilalang disabot-sabutan.
Yes.
Yes, disabot-sabuwa. Wala pay permit sa DNR and I know DNR is very, very particular with cutting of trees. Ganon, for them to be easily construct or rather than saving the tree? I do not see the point what there is, approve?
Kanang.
Lucky approve?
Yes.
So, wala sila mahimo anak? You think so?
Ah, that's why, that's why.
If the buildings of those supposedly buildings nga dagko na bilis nga nae dagko nga kahoy. Wala na lang di sila mahimo anak, wala na man duma naa.
Madam Chair.
So, again, how many mahoganitri will they be cutting again? Diha sa libisoria. And this is a, as per you telling us, no wala pay permit sila redisabot-sabutan. It's already, you are not, you're not following the law.
That is why I asked, I require these, those three offices to submit what are the agreements. So what are, say no, unanila to submit to my committee. So that, it is my reference, whatever action that we may do as in the city council. Because percy, it is illegal kay wala pagin permit, they admitted that. Nako, for what purpose that you will ask permit after? Inyo na i reconstruct ng kuwan, i-restructure ng kahoy na putol naman.
That is hundred years old, the pin. In fact, when I spoke to the mayor, mayor said, no, they're not going to cut that except for one. Mungkin ako nadung dumad. So meaning ang ilah is pinakasayon. If they are going to approve the building, it's not really a building really, is a mini building. Why? Takes time. Ang ako nga, why are they cutting the trees nga naanad ya for years na na din ha? Ang ato bayya point is saving. Saving trees, then we plant trees, more trees to provide this mitigation no sa ato environment. How come? Ngayna na lande ka sayon ng ilang putlo ng kahoy?
We will have another meeting.
Yes, make sure. Ngasunod nila nga meeting nga na ako and I want to be in that meeting. Because I do not want the trees again to be cut for that reason again.
Okay, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any comment? Refer to the committee on environment, public works, and tourism. Maura, talo. So the next speaker, and make sure, make sure that is legally, ano, it is legally bound no? Nganaputlo ng kahoy, eh make sure nga kanin legal, otherwise. Sige lang, what is the, who is the next speaker? Councillor Ayamark Nakaya. Actually, it is his first, ano, preface speech.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you.
I am one hundred percent in agreement with the voice and the position of the Presiding Officer.
Thank you.
May I ask our secretary to please play the video of Cora Luca Vega, who performed in her drag queen performance, Amanami, which has been a controversial performance for the past weeks in the Christian nation Philippines. Louder, please. That Cora Luca Vega, Madam Presiding Officer, has just portrayed our Nazarene, Jesus Christ, for the faithful in the Catholic, in the Christian world. That's sacrilegious. That's disrespectful. Even the laws of the land, not only in the Philippines, have factored in in the provisions of the revised penal code. Those who will be offending the religious feelings will be liable of the act under Article 133. And there is also a related article in the revised penal code which I don't want to expound further because the Article 133 is already has its own meaning and meat to this special report. I've been asked by some friends in the religious sector, not only from the Catholic priest, but also in the Christian faithfuls, Madam Presiding Officer. What is the stand of the city council of Kageyan Dior? In Manila, in Bukidnon, in Jensen, in Zambuanga, in many other places where Sanguneans have stood firm their respective stance by declaring persona non grata. This fellow who not only disgusted us, a distasteful act, behavior. Nagrabigad ang iyang paginsulto sa mga lagto. While we are a lawmaker, Madam Presiding Officer, but we cannot close our eyes with this act and behavior. In fact, after few weeks of recall of the Senate, Congress, and many other councils, he was not apologetic of his action. Perhaps recently. But his eagerness that he has just performed an act. No. You are violating the law. You are offending the faithful's feelings. And for a Christian nation, you are not a person with dignity. I don't this drag queen is a showcase of a gay modeling show. Okay na na. LGBT magbuhat anak, Madam Presiding Officer. Pero sa paginsulto sa religious practices, faith, and how we pray to our God, that's another thing. And we hope that we are one and I am proposing strongly. Either we declare the fellow persona non grata, but because the city does not find good taste in the performance, or we declare our disgust of the performance of that fellow. When we should make a stand as a Christian city, as people who believe in God, in fact, before we do conduct our business, we pray. And that belief should be boundless. Not only within the territory of the city, but for those who are unfaithful and at the same time declare things for them easily in public to decry and do an act or behavior that is against the law and against our emotion, against our belief. We should stand firm and at the proper time, I am proposing, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It is very clear, there's a makire where beliefs. We teach our children to pray, we teach our children to be a very, part of our upbringing, our children is to be, to know God. And now, this is a makire of what we believe in. We respect even other religion. We respect and I find it so distasteful. So, okay, we will wait in the proper time, Councillor Ayamark Nakaya. Let's proceed. The next who will do the preface speech is Councillor Roger Abadai, you recognize?
Once again, good afternoon everyone. For our Presiding Officer and all members of the 28th City Council and all people who are listening and watching us today, may hapong tatanan. This special report with regards to the ASF, or African swine fever. Now, the local government code especially mandates that the local government units exercise necessary powers to prevent the livestock industry from any outbreak and ensure safety to the public from harmful effects of animal disease. The animal industry outbreaks in the country and abroad, particularly the African swine fever pose a major threat to the industry and public health. There is an urgent need to respond to animal health problems and other related concerns and the need to create and implement strengthened prevention, control, and eradication measures. Executive Orders Number 169 and 171, Series of 2019, were issued upon constituting the Kageyan Dioro Anti-African Swine Fever or Anti-ASF Task Force. Upon recommendation of the task force, Executive Order Number 172 was issued to impose temporary total ban on the entry of hogs, all fresh pork meat and processed product coming from all other places identified as ASF affected areas in the country or abroad. As of now, the city of Kageyan Dioro is short of supply of hogs. So, especially in city, the city pista is coming. So, possibly wala na ilitzon maka dalit sa ato mga bisita. Ganey, sa kasalan ni, sa kasalan bayan ng mayor, Galison ang mga litsoneros pagpangita sa mga litsonon. Una mangaling mahal, mahal pagyod, tungut sa kakulang sa mga baboy no? Now, ang atong sida, Kageyan Dioro is reliant of supply of hogs from the province of Zambuanga, which was recently declared as ISF affected area. Surprisingly, daghan ka pun maka sulod nga mga baboy, gikan sama ugag lugar. Diliwala sa checkpoint from the municipality of Lugait and to Upl. So, kini subject for validation lani kay meritis la pagnadunggan lani, gikan sa mga behiro or ganun mga shippers so, nga, ang mga suppliers gabayad sila per head ka da baboy. Para lang maka lusot, dili sa checkpoint. So, ingon so full. Now, ang ubang suppliers para dili maka bayad, dito sila mo agis sa diversion road from Iligan to Bukidnon, lusot sa San Timun. O ang ubang sa, lusot dinisay pit, kaya wala may checkpoint diya, wala may truan-truna. So, mauna nga, ah, pakingon sa dinisas sida, pagsulod. So, wala na control, wala na dinaslamat kuwan. So, possibly kanang mga baboy kanang lusot din eh, na daganan na kakaon si urus sa mga baboy nga dunay sakit, litson kanay sakit. Ambot na na ilitzon karamba, sinanay isip, sanan na atong makaon. So, gihi munang korruption, kining ISF nga pagban. Nakasapi na ang mga tao nga na tinugyanan. So, kinanganlan ang city government kita sa CDU should modify the restrictions of the entry of hogs coming from the affected areas, particularly sa Zambuanga. Sa Zambuanga ramoyo, pumatano ni mong litsonero, di torgid gagikan, sagaran no? So, the hogs suppliers and shippers from Lugait and upon reaching checkpoint of Upl, paggikan dito. After proper verification or physical inspection of the hogs, the city veterinary personnel, kanan na may ilang checkpoint po diya karoon, assign their hat, will escort the hogs suppliers going to Mamboaya. Kanang atong Mamboaya area nga na, diya unta ang facility para sa testing or hugging or blood. Diya unta himoon. Five years na, wala pagin mapansyon, wala mapansyon. Pero tungut sa tabang sa mga Litsonero Association, hidid by President Tinila Silio Durya. Ilang di improve ang kanang atong Mamboaya facilities diya. Pwede na nga dito dalon ang gikan so full kay, ang suggestion unta nila, pagzulod so full dito kuwan o blood testing, tututri hours, maka lusot. May bawang day unay ISF, ang problema kay wala eh area nga dito istak ang baboy for during examination. So, suggestion nga, kinanganlan gamit on ato ang atong Mamboaya area para sa kanang blood, kanang laboratory. Para dito ibutang ang mga baboy dalon gikan sa other places, especially for Zambuanga or other places. Dito mag blood extraction, ISF testing, tagging, or issuance of release order. Kung libre na sila sa sakit. So, for convenience, ang atong city veterinary area or hog, and hog shipper for convenience, while waiting for the result of the laboratory examination. So, for safety, kanatong tanan dinisag Kageyan Dioro, kumahimo magahangyo kita sa atong city mayor. nga kumahimo ato nanang gamit on kanang atong Mamboaya kuwan, Mamboaya laboratory or building para nga mahilig kay kita sa mga kanin ISF. Kay antud karoon, di takabalong nga kanang atong gikaon nga baboy libre manakay, nagpalusot naman ng mga supplier karoon sa, sa kanin baboy patasulod din eh. So, I am referring this special report to the Committee on Agriculture and possibly sa Health and Other Related Committees in order to address the issue, Madam Chair and my colleague. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councillor Roger Abadai. Yes, any comment? Yes, Councillor Romeo Caliso, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to you and for my colleagues and to our guests. It's good to have this issue be referred to the appropriate committee, the Committee on Agriculture, to check on what to do with the possible entry of the ASF and its possible effects, Madam Chair. But on the issue of corruption, this is one thing that we should deal with very seriously. Because really, the effect of crime is very much felt if the criminal is from within. It's like if there's a holdup in a, it's not easy to conduct a holdup on a bank if there's no inside job, Madam Chair. Much so with the local government. O wala taga guberno nga, kanang kuwan, magpasagad nga, but sulod ang mga baboy nga dali-dali without the appropriate inspection. Di kina maka lusot, Madam Chair. That's why there's now a challenge of our bureaucracy to see to it that indeed our people should be trustworthy enough that they're performing their job. Kaya, wala giniya, if those are committing acts against the law is from within, there's nothing we could do to stop corruption, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Romeo Caliso. Yes. Councillor Bernie Sparsha, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May hapong kanatuntanan. Madam Chair, it's a very good report of our kuya, Kuya Roger Abadai regarding about this. Sa tinod-anay lang, Madam Chair, tinodyun, mahal na kayo tungod aning ISF, mahal na kayong litson. Ang uban, ang style galing, dito na magpalitson sa mga El Salvador area. Tapos, private na lang, isa kayang litson pasulod, kaya may mo checkup sa mga private cars. Sudri na lang mo palit, kaya dakug andiparinsya sa presyo sa El Salvador, padulong sa sulod. Mister Chair, nitindog ko because there was, I remember one time nga on our committee hearing naang City Vet. At they were discussing about giunsa nila nga maprevent, tanad dili mosulod. Whatever unsa ilang gabuhaton para di ilang maka sulang baboy, fine. Kung unsa yong diskarte, wala'y problema. Ang ako lang gusto po di share, Madam Chair, point out. Na hopefully, tanam makita po sa dakbayan sa Kageyan Dioro. Na anyway, this is also another opportunity. What if kuwan ISF, nanalang gi diya permiti? Maybe it's about time also nga yapi na to sa tong planning nga. Di pa burak opportunity po ni nga, it's about time nga kita mismo dri sa Kageyan Dioro. I-incurise ang mga tao nga sila mismo, nanaputay mga ona to dri nga mga baboyan giya nga atong onsors. If dri sa dakbayan sa Kageyan Dioro, nakita na tong na clear DNI, nga wala tay ISF, then why not? Dili to be bias sa Distrito Uno. Basipoy din in the more na magbuhat kita plano, gikan sa City Vet. nga, moat to dri sa Interland barangays nga, o di. Mahal man ang baboy, maglisod, maglusot, di burak opportunity na to ni nga, unay na, unay na ta. nga atis dri sa Kageyan Dioro, maka, maka buhit, takogaling ang baboy, atis maka tabang batas sa atong mga katauhan. Ngat least diri sa Cagayan Dioro, maka, maka buhit, kaw galing ang baboy, at least makatabang batas sa atong mga katauhan diri sa Cagayan Dioro, nga dugang panginabuhian nila. At least kita maka focus patanga every day, at least atong area sa Cagayan Dioro, ma-check na to kung komustang inyong pagbuhi diri, okay ba, na ba sa tamang proseso. At least, again, Madam Chair, ako lang ipakita nga, basin po dini, opportunity po ni, for our cagayanons, nga kita na lang po ang makasupply sa atong kaw galingong baboy diri sa ciudad. Dagan salamat, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilor J. Pascual, you recognize?
Mayong hapon, Madam Chair, fellow counselors. Um, actually, Madam Chair, si Doc Perla Assis, nakadakuk naman sila, ug kanang gas, pasulod ug baboy, gani, I think ang isa nadakpan is dito sa Manay, barangay Tignapuluhan, and, ah, ang some mga portions sa ato ang kuwan po, ato mga checkpoints, kina amantay mga i-hire ano, Madam Chair, nga magbantay sa ato mga checkpoints, kauban ang ato ang task force oro and akpo. But, ang ilam ang good, Madam Chair, is gamayra daw kayo ang ato ang penalty, if na ay madakpan. Gani, madakan patagasto, because ato pa na siyang ilubong, patyuntanan ang katung mga baboy, ilubong, then pangitahan pag area kung ahapag yod siya ilubong. So, usahay, ilan na na ignore nga, balik na lang mo sa inyong agi. So, if ever, Madam Chair, naaunta tay specific nga balaud, nga kung madakpan, padakan yod ang penalty. If ever, we are very serious sa A S F, gani, ang A S F, gani, Madam Chair, this is a threat to our food security. Gani, ang taga cagayan, mahilig man yod ug baboy. So, if ever, kung mawala na, dakuk kayo nga kuano, dakuk nga problema, and, ah, matut pasaginong ni Councilor Roger Abaday, nga mahilig bayag kita ug baboy, especially karoon that fiesta is approaching. So, hopefully ma, ma kuwanan na to magapan, Madam Chair, and, ah, if ever, imo na lang irefer sa komite para dito na lang nintanan. Dagan salamat.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor J. Pascual. Yes, any other comment?
Actually, ah, yes, we do not even know, nagkauna ta, kaya ga pang lusot man, oh, every, every occasion, I let you know. Did the Department of Health also have these findings, nga dun na ba effect ang A S F sa mga tao nga nang aon? I would like to know that. I'm very curious kay, permin naman lang baboy, baboy, baby, ang pakasadan. And then, dun na batay record, yapi na na siya, Councilor J. Pascual, record nga katung na nga ug baboy, na may sakit nga nahatag. Wala't ta findings sana, always the baboy, baboy swine flu. So, will that also be a contributor ang swine flu to the health of the individual, no? Kaya wala giko kadungoga, ni kaog swine flu, to anak ko, gi admit ako, kaya luoy besad. Luoy kayo, kaya backyard gardening, a backyard pigery is not allowed, di ba? Delay allowed sa balaud, katuro mga big time. And this small time, they are the ones who raise for their children's tuition, for payment of bills and whatever. Ang ako bawan, gusto may bawan, unsay effect sa ato nga, sige man tagkaon sa baboy nga na ay swine flu. Councilor J.
Ah, salamat, Madam Chair. Actually, ang wala pag yod proper findings, but ang DA naparerelease man sila, nga if ever nga mukaon ka og meat nga na ay A S F, delay man siya makatakod sa tao. It is only dangerous to other animals, that is why nga kanang ihagya pong felong nga baboy. That is why, Madam Chair, nga di bawalan ang pagbahog sa pasau, because usahay katung na ay nasagol na baboy, then di mong ipakaon sa baboy, dito man to magtakod takod. So, karoon, gani, ang atong city government of Cagayan Dioro, it's doing its best, because naanaman ta sa yellow nga zone, and, ah, hopefully maapil na kita sa green zone nga wala nag A S F, but apparently, ah, lisod kayo siya, Madam Chair, kaya daghan nagigapasulod ug ka na mga baboy sa mga affected areas nga atong mga silinga, no? So, hopefully, Madam Chair, nga ma, matagaan ug importan siya po ang A S F, because, ah, kailangan nag yod siya. So, delay siya makapatay sa tao, but, ah, maka, gani, na iuban nga mga kuwan, delay, nako mag ingon sa ngalan sa pigery, but na ay dakuk nga pigery nga, wala sila nag, na, nadakpan ang ilahang, ang nagsakit, tanan nilang baboy. So, pilaka hundred millions ang worth, so instead nga i-declare nila nga A S F ilang baboy, gipatay na lang nila, gibaligya na lang tanan. Kaya kinsa daw'y maka ako ug lubong ug one hundred million.
Precisely why, nangalusot nga baboy, nang aunta, I do not see the point eh, even if it's a national law, no? I do not see the point nga, kasi pamatsyon nila nga baboy, tanan pamatsyon, kasi may natakdan, we don't know. Ngano nakalusot man, we don't know. So, these are the things, I am not concerned whether A S F has done harm to those people. Na batay record sa D U H, nga naka himo ug sakit sa kada tao. I'd like to know that. Okay, sige naman lang taun ta swine, 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 and then wala gyan ta, we have no concrete, concrete guidelines. Dakuk is dakuk, black and white, karoon, lusot, lusot, so it was not implemented properly. Ang ako na lang sa tao, nalasa ko, ug unsay effect, mga kakaon ng swine flu, I know, everybody was, nakatilo agit siguro, kaya lamig mang lisun. Ha? Man ako, delete, ambot lang, swine flu ba'to? Anyway, anyway, yes, oh, yeah, last.
Alayun sa imong ging, gingon, Madam Chair, inanin na lang po kay, tood nag ingon nga, ipagbawal karoon ito mga backyard grazers, pero ginahinay naman po na to, naglip ta sa restrictions sa gitawag na to sa A S F. Ang ato pwede ba, kaya napiangan magidatong backyard industry nga, delay magidatong na malalis nga, naka, nasilay ambag sa lokal nga ekonomiya. Pwede ba mapangitahan na to modifications sa balaud, nga tugutan na na to sila, ug suportahan na na to, kaya nga nung ipagbawal man na to sila. Kaysa ako na bawan, sa definition sa DA, nga ang backyard grazers, mo pwede nila maka buhi sila ug bibitain bibi ka ulo nga baboy. So, nga, di man na to sila tugutan, nga sa anyong numero, maka ambag sila, nasilay ambag sa lokal nga ekonomiya.
Yes, oo. Anyway, yes, Councilor J. Pascual, you have the floor.
Short answer lang, Madam Chair, sa katung pamutanan ni kuano, actually, we have a program nga maghimo tag pigery gani, si Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, ato majority floor leader, naghatag ug property dito sa kuwan.
Yay, taga eh, asa na pet.
Sa tuburan, sa tuburan.
Tuburan, meaning this will be by the constituents or negosyante lang?
Actually, this is for the city government nga.
Yeah, constituents?
Yes, yes.
Constituents? Is that adlaw din dalaw?
Delay siya, Madam Chair, atong una siya, Madam Chair.
Atong kaw galingon.
Tanan dayon nga maproduce na to, ihatag din na to sa mga backyard.
Okay, that is a very good program, because we cannot be monopolizing nga ang kuwan sa ilarag yod. Kaya we encourage backyard, ah, pigery?
Yes.
Kaya mo maginimakasustain. Yes, thank you very much, Councilor. Ha, pila did kay imong gidunayit nga kuwan.
And, ah, Madam Chair, naadentay ipanghatag po na mga baboy nga, ato na pong itagaan po ug mga feeds, ang ato ang mga backyard grazers.
Oh, mauna, okay.
So, ah, actually, ang first gani nila nga download is two hundred hogs dito sa barangay Ipunan, Madam Chair.
Okay, that's good, that's good to hear.
We have been doing that since last year.
Okay.
Para ma-promote na to atong backyard grazers. Ang katung na ay backyard nga baboyan, but of course, naanag yod sila'y kuwan, Madam Chair, wala sila sa affected areas nga barangay.
Okay, yes. Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you very much. Okay, let us proceed. Majority floor leader, Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
So, we go to the business of the day.
Okay.
Now, item number one, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seventy, confirming the appointment of Ms. Anisia Tongson, a city government department two of the city social welfare and development office with all rights and privileges according to. May request, ah, ako magyapun eh, um, I move for the approval of this, ah, proposal resolution, Madam Chair.
In a second, objection, manifestation? Yes, Councilor Michael Seno.
Good afternoon to you, Madam Presiding Officer, and of course to the majority floor leader. May I ask with the kind indulgence of the members of the twenty-eight city council to please recognize Ma'am Ani Tongson, who is here, so that she could present also herself before this August body.
Okay, ah, let us recognize Ms. Anisia Ting Tongson. Us, majority.
Ah, move to suspend the rules.
Rule suspended. Second, objection, I inan motion is by Karin. Yes, ma'am.
Ang akong pantahod sa atong honorable city counselors, of course, headed by the honorable, ah, Presiding Officer, honorable city vice mayor Joseline Beboto Rodriguez. Yes, I am Anisia Tongson. Currently, the officer in charge of the city social welfare and development department. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon. So, ah, congratulations, no? Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So, you will be the, ano na, the head?
The official, ah, head or department manager of, ah, the, she is the buludid.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am, and congratulations again. Yes, Councilor Gurley, balaba, you recognize? Kadali lang ha, kajut lang, lingkod sa'ko, kaya musturia pa si Councilor. Ma'am, ayaw saglakaw.
Ay, sa Ma'am Ani.
Yeah, saka ma'am.
Mayong hapon, ah, Madam Chair, and to my, to my colleagues, and, ah, nakita na ko, no? Um, Ma'am Ani has been with the city social welfare development office since when, Ma'am Ani?
Actually, I started in the social welfare office, ah, since nineteen.
Tagala, dalaga pa siguro ka.
Nineteen eighty-nine. I started actually in the DSWD region, and I was one of the devolved personnel, last devolution sa nineteen ninety-two, I think. So, to be exact, I am now thirty-four years in the service.
Oh, dugan, dugan na ganyan, ma'am.
This is a very much deserved appointment, Ma'am Ani. Congratulations. And hope, ah, um, you will, ah, have, ah, you will make our CSWD, um, better and more improved for the delivery of services to our citizens.
Yes, I will really do my best.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, to, yes, Councilor Bernie Sparsia, you recognize?
Madam Chair, may pwede mong utan na isa lang, kamang Anisia Tongson?
Yes, proceed.
Pangpadgent ni ma'am, charat lang. Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Sa, sa gabuhaton karoon sa CSWD, na ba kayo nakita nga usabon nga proseso or maintain lang yapon, Madam Mora? Thank you.
Actually, sir, sa akong observation, sa akong one year naman siguro ko as officer in charge, we are trying nga mahapsay ang dagan sa atong office, and kung unsatong atong mga kakulangon in the, in the past years, we are also trying nga ma-implementar na to sa insakto. And with the help, of course, with the help of my colleagues sa office, I hope nga makayaranamo pag atubang ang mga challenges. Although ang social welfare office dilibang yod sa yon, obisina, I know that, and dilipunin ako mahimo sa akurang maginusara, but with the help of my colleagues. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much again, Ma'am Tongson.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, thank you.
There is a pending motion, Madam Chair, for the approval of the, ah, for the approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seventeen.
Second, objection, I inan motion is by Karin.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second, objection, I inan motion is by Karin.
Items two and three, four, third, five. For omnibus approval, item two, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seven one, returning to the sangguyang kabataan na barangay dan silihon, its resolution number nine, series of twenty twenty-three, covering its supplemental budget number one for CY twenty twenty-three, with an estimated income of one million two hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred ninety-five pesos. Item three, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seven two, returning to the sangguyang kabataan na barangay number one, the city's resolution number zero zero three dash twenty twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-three, covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of four hundred three thousand seventy-four pesos. Item four, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seven three, returning to the sangguyang kabataan na barangay number thirty-nine, the city's resolution number zero zero two, series of twenty twenty-three, covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of three hundred three thousand three hundred eighty-seven pesos. Item five, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seven four, returning to the sangguyang kabataan na barangay Perto, the city, its resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six, series of twenty twenty-three, covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of one million six hundred fifty, six hundred fifty thousand and one hundred five pesos, with the information that said resolutions are operative in their entirety. Committee sponsors, committee sports and youth development, and committee on laws and rules. Ah, may I request, Madam Chair, that Councilor John Michael Seno be recognized?
Councilor Michael Seno, you recognize?
Good afternoon. Once again, Madam Presiding Officer, of course, to the majority floor leader and the President Navidya, fellow cagayanos, considering, considering that it's gone through the local finance committee, assume for its approval on the optimus motion stated under, ah, by our secretary.
In a second, objection, I inan motion is by Karin.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second, objection, I inan motion is by Karin.
Omnibus motion, items six and seven, third. Item six is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seven five, accrediting the A, barangay Indahag Community Farmers Association, BICFA, and B, Williamar Subdivision Homeowners Association Incorporated, for purposes of their membership in the local special bodies pursuant to the ILG circular number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight three and article sixty-four, rule thirteen of the rules and regulations implementing the nineteen ninety-one Local Government Code, or funding their respective projects from the city or other sources as required under the COA circular pertinent there to. Item seven, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four seven six, accrediting the herein enumerated civil society organizations for purposes of their membership in the Committee on People's Organization of the City Development Council pursuant to ordinance number one four three three four dash twenty twenty-two. To it, one, Cogan Agora Motorola Operators and Drivers Association, CAMODA. Two, barangay Indahag Community Farmers Association, BICFA, and three, Williamar Subdivision Homeowners Association Incorporated. Committee sponsors, committee on planning, research, and innovation, and people's organization accreditation, and committee on laws and rules. Ah, Madam Chair, may I request that Councilor Romeo Caliso be recognized?
Councilor Romeo Caliso, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. May I move for the approval of the two proposed resolutions?
In a second, objection, I inan motion is by Karin.
Move to approve second and final reading.
Second, objection, I inan motion is by Karin.
Item number eight, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two seventy, approving the application of Canituan Pagatpat Cockers Association, represented by its president, Mr. Isigani De Gaspe, for a permit to conduct one cock derby at the Canituan Pagatpat Cockpit Arena, barangay, barangay Pagatpat, the city, on August twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, on the occasion of the feast of Senior San Agustin. May I request that Councilor Abaday be recognized?
Councilor Roger Abaday.
Ah, for the approval of this proposed ordinance, considering that it compared with law and ordinance about cockfighting, for approval.
Councilor Roger, Romeo Caliso, you are recognized. A second pa, second, second. Then, there's a manifestation, Councilor Romeo Caliso. Is that an objection?
Not an objection, Madam Chair, but a simple correction.
Okay.
I happen to be a cockfighting aficionado, and there's no I happen to be a cockfighting aficionado and there's no such thing as a one cock derby.
Eh, pila pa di ka bu.
Uh, maybe that is a one day derby, Madam Chair.
Ay, okay, na ba ginase ka at bang?
One cock. I, I, I never heard about a one cock derby, Madam Chair.
One day.
Otherwise, was she kontra?
Was she kontra?
One cock lang.
So it's a one day derby.
So it's one day, say a poor correction, no? Okay, is that, you read, you're the author, you read it one cock?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm not, uh, 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 in gambling, I am not so much, uh, uh, quan. Uh, experience about this, uh, guano. I only, uh...
So never, it happened only one cock, never?
Yes, yes. This was misloka, Madam Chair, during our committee meeting.
Kaya do, gina sigurado, siya ro sah. Anyway.
Basing di drama na, kuya sir.
Basing di. Okay, one day, yeah.
One day derby, uh, I was, I was unable to.
Okay, yes, a correction, one day.
I was not able to see it.
Ay, you did not see it also?
Because I'm not a cockfighting, I'm not an aficionado.
Okay, okay. So any second, I did not see it also, I was reading. Any second?
Subject to correction?
Yes, subject for correction. Uh, objection? Pending amendment?
Subject to correction.
Correction lang. Anyway, objection, I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second. An objection, I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Number nine, Madam Chair, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two seven one, approving the application of the Northern Mindanao Gimp Fall Breeders Association, represented by Mr. Victor Cabeltes, for a permit to conduct a three-day Fiesta Stack Derby suvalanay cockfight at the Indahag Square Garden, Barangay Indahag, the city, on September twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, on the, on the occasion of the Fiesta of Shit barangay. May I request councillor Romeo Caliso be recognized?
Councillor Romeo Caliso, you recognize? Lahi ang stag, ang lahi ang cockfighting.
Yeah, uh, if it is, uh, stag, that is the younger, uh...
A younger version.
Younger fighting, uh, cocks, uh, Madam Chair.
Cockfighting is the old.
If it is cock, uh, they're the battle cocks, they say. So the older cocks are being used for the cockfighting. So, uh, I think everything is in order with this ordinance, Madam Chair. I move for its approval.
Okay, and it's, re-categorize na siya younger of older. Where do you belong? Anyway, uh, any second. Yes councillor Michael Seno, you recognize?
I'm not objecting, Madam Presiding Officer, put it on record, but I, I just wanna ask because previously, we have approved some members of association in the city of Kagaian Dioro.
Okay.
Accredited in the city. This, uh, NMGBA, does this association be one of the member also? Maybe, I'm asking Madam Presiding Officer, so that we could ask them to be the member also in the people's organization in the city because they can benefit through this association to do a cockfighting and yet they have not a member in the city government's people organization.
So are we going, are they all, okay, is it okay?
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, Madam Presiding Officer.
Uh, the accreditation in the government, city government for, to be recognized is only for purposes of receiving aid from the city government. This is not, they are not receiving any aid. So therefore, you can only qualify to receive assistance from the city government if you are an accredited organization.
So we don't?
As long as they have the personality to, to conduct this.
Okay, sige. Any second. Objection, I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second objection, I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Number eleven, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two seven three, amending ordinance number four one four three six eight twenty twenty-two, entitled, ordinance authorizing, ten, ten. Oh, ten, oh, sorry. Uh, item ten, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two seven two, appropriating the sum of four hundred ninety thousand from the item non-office social services sector, sector, awards, rewards, sports incentives in the twenty twenty-three annual budget to be made available as individual cash incentive award to the herein local athletes who won medals, awards in national and or international competitions of different sports events for the period February twenty twenty-two to November twenty twenty-two. May I request that councillor, uh, Aimy Moreno be recognized?
Councillor Aimy Moreno, you recognize?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I move to approve proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash two seven two.
Any second. Objection? Manifestation, councillor Roger Abadai, you recognize?
Uh, this is just to ask the chairman of the sports committee, who are these, uh, uh, recipients of the award? Whether, were international or are they qualified to receive this? They have record?
So, uh, who will answer? Councillor Michael Seno, you have the floor?
Uh, ato lang basiloon, Madam Presiding Officer, basinuwan yan na basahi. Uh, kindly turn your page in on appendix K, page ninety-eight. Uh, have you seen it already councillor Roger? Okay, uh, appendix K, page ninety-eight. Uh, wala pa na appeal ang councillor Roger Abadai Junior, dany, award. We have Kapalitan Zoyo, National Youth Schools Chess Champion Principal, the last September sixteen to twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, in the Pitang City. We have Pekinol Asling, Ayane Cole.
Okay na, we, I, we, we, ano, we're able to see the.
Because the good gentleman from first district is asking me to read this one, so I will.
No more, no more.
No more, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Michael Seno. Yes, proceed councillor, majority floor leader.
Uh, there is a motion now.
There's already a motion. Any second? Any objection? I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection, I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Item eleven, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two seven three, third. Item eleven, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two seven three, amending ordinance number one four three six eight dash twenty twenty-two, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui, representing the city government of Kagaian Dioro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources Regional Office Number Ten, B four ten, represented by its regional director, Tudoro I Baculod Junior, and the Danau, and the Danau Lake Fisher-Fook Association, represented by its president, Mr. Fidelio P. Makarandan, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the Belik Sigla sa ilog at lawa, Basel Program at Lake Danau, barangay Pagalungan, the city, for a period of one year under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. So as to change therein the name of the B four ten signatory from regional director Tudoro I Baculod Junior to regional director Edward B. Yasay. Committee sponsor, committee on laws and rules. Uh, may I request councillor George Gokey be recognized?
Councillor George Gokey, you recognize?
May hapon vice, uh, vice mayor, uh, Bebop Rodriguez, makauban ako sa City Council. Uh, there's, I find, uh, proposed ordinance two oh three dash two seven three in order, I move for the approval.
Any second. Objection, I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection, I hear no motion, Mr. Baikari.
Number twelve, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two seven four, providing for social pension to indigent adults and children with disability, providing funds therefore, and for other purposes. May I request councillor Jolene Mercedes Gurly Balaba?
Councillor Gurly Mercedes Balaba, you recognize?
Yes, good afternoon, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this proposed ordinance, um, took, uh, years in the making. Um, uh, we, this was conceptualized sin, uh, since the nineteenth, uh, nineteenth, uh, City Council. Um, it took years because, um, we really made sure that the data that we are, we gather for the figures of our PWDs, the indigents belonging to the, uh, low-income households, um, are really accurate and verified. Um, we gathered the data from the offices of, um, CSWD and the city planning, and from the DSWD and, uh, PSA. So with, uh, everything is in order. Um, I move for the approval of the social pension of our indigent adults and children with disabilities, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two seven four, um, uh, to be approved.
Any second. Yeah, if, may I, uh, make a manifestation councillor Gurly? Uh, because the legal office in his opinion defined social pension based on regular Republic Act one one nine one six, increasing the social pension for senior citizens, you know, as an amount is good, not less than one thousand for the indigent adults and children. Is that a possibility that we can have one thousand sarbase instead of five hundred? Ang na-proving you is five hundred. Is it also a possibility instead of five hundred, one thousand?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think the, sir, from the city legal office, this is just an example of the, uh, definition of the social pension.
Yes, precisely.
And, uh, this is for, uh...
Senior citizen.
Senior citizen.
Yes, but because, uh, not more than one thousand, less than one thousand, is that also possible?
I, uh, I, we, we, we hope, no, no, we could increase our, uh, pension for our PWDs, but, uh, as of this time, because this is a parang pilot, um, year pa, or twenty twenty-four. So we, hopefully, hopefully, na we wish na madungagan.
Yes. Thank you very much councillor Gurly Balaba. Uh, second, objection? I hear no, motion, Mr. Baikari.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second.
Thank you, thank you Gurly, Gurla, this is a good ordinance.
Yeah. Uh, any, uh, second objection, I hear no, motion, Mr. Baikari.
Uh, for inclusion, Madam Chair.
Second.
Items thirteen, fourteen.
Objection. I, I hear none? I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ayadan. Okay.
For inclusion.
Any second objection, I hear no, motion, Mr. Baikari.
Uh, item thirteen. Item thirteen is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two seven five, confirming or ratifying the memorandum of agreement, MOA, entered into by and between the city government of Kagaian Dioro, represented by the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui and the Misamis Oriental One Rural Electric Service Cooperative, Incorporated, represented by its board president, Dr. Nonito M. Labis, Labis, DVM, covering the collaboration of the parties in the electrification services at City Upinas, barangay Taboran, the city, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, certified urgent by Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui. Move to, uh, move to approve.
Any second. Objection, I hear no, motion, Mr. Baikari.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection, I hear no, motion, Mr. Baikari.
Number fourteen, third. Number fourteen, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two seven six, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui, representing the city government of Kagaian Dioro, to enter into and sign a memorandum of agreement with accredited visiting specialist physicians covering the collaboration of the parties relative to the latter's professional services with patients confined at the payward private rooms of the JR Borja General Hospital, under the terms and conditions stipulated in the pro forma MOA submitted to this body, certified urgent by Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui. May I request, Madam Chair, that councillor Romeo Caliso be recognized?
Councillor Romeo Caliso, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I move for, uh, the approval of this set ordinance?
Any second. Objection, I hear no, motion, Mr. Baikari.
Number fifteen, confirming the, move to approve second, on second and final reading.
Objection, I hear no, motion, Mr. Baikari.
Number fifteen, proposed resolution twenty twenty-three dash four seven seven, confirming the appointment of Mr. Norman P. Bala, as city government department head, two of the city management information system, and innovation department, with all rights and privileges pursuant there to. Uh, before we move for the approval, may I request Mrs. Bala to come forward and say something?
Uh, suspend rule.
Move to suspend the rule, Madam Chair.
Rule suspended, then. Any second. Objection, I hear no, motion, Mr. Bala, rule is suspended. Or motion, Mr. Baikari.
Honorable City Vice Mayor Joselyn Bebop Rodriguez, members of this twenty-eighth, uh, City Council. Good afternoon to us all. Uh, to introduce myself, uh, I am Norman Bala, from the office of Human Resource Department, with the position of, uh, Information Technology Officer Two. Today, I stand before this body with thirty-eight years of dedicated service to the city government of Kagaian Dioro. It has been an incredible journey marked by growth, learning, and revering commitment. I rose from the rank and nganik, start ko, your honor. Uh, clerical grade one, yainahinay gitug saka. From the very start, I had the privilege of serving the rule that allowed me to contribute to the betterment of our community. My tenure has provided me with an in-depth understanding of our government's operations, values, and the formative impact it can have on citizens' lives. Thank you for considering my application. I look forward to the opportunity to continue making a meaningful difference in the lives of our fellow citizens and in the future of our government. Thank you.
Thank you very much and congratulations, Sir Norman Bala.
May I request?
Uh, may I recognize, excuse me, majority floor, may I recognize councillor Romeo Caliso?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I don't, I have no objection to the confirmation of Mr. Bala. I just like to, yes, I'm so much interested in the works there at, uh, the CMIS. I'd just like to ask him, while upon your assumption in the office, Mr. Bala, what could have been the most pressing defect of our current system? That's the first question.
Uh, if you allow me.
Now, uh, I have a follow-up question to this. How long do you intend to fill the gap that said the defect?
Uh, I'll, uh, good afternoon, sir, your honor. Uh, if I'm given the chance to, to, uh, to express my, uh, proposed plan as, uh, departmented in the department of the City Management Information System and Innovation, uh, my proposed plan would involve the strategies.
Kindly answer first my first question, Mr. Bala. What, uh, pressing defect of our present information system were you able to identify?
Kung sa'yo nakita ni mga depekto sa ato na sitasyon.
Actually, uh, I'm from the office for human resource management, but if I'm given the chance, I would like to, uh... I would like to, uh... Kasi the procurement of, uh, computer, uh, hardware Must pass through to the Department of, uh, City Department. Para, uh, naik kontrol, Your Honor. Atong ma... Ato yung ma suta nga Ang maong, uh, procure ba procurement sa maong ekipo Like computers Haong ba sa, uh, mga new specification? Kibasin unya magprocure taunya Uh... Under kibaling, uh, dele sa present bitong, uh... Canang update version or sa news fix? Kaya sa computer, uh, hardware Fast manggutang innovation, uh, Your Honor. So dapat, uh, tanaw na'to, situate na'to nga Uh... Haong bagyo ang unit nga giprocure sa maong, uh... Sa maong departmento o asapadepit. So dapat mo agi sa among departmento para among masuta On, uh... Quality ba ang maong, uh, procurement? That's Your Honor.
Okay. Are you okay? Yes?
Last, Madam Chair. I came to ask this because, uh, Probably one of the, the most problematic departments here is The CMIS. Our records are there. Ifaka, magka-sayup-sayup tasa, Distribute some of our benefits, et cetera, Because of the defective information system. We have to look into this. And I hope, uh, Mr. Bala will be focusing on this, Madam Chair. But I don't have any objection on his confirmation.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Romeo Caliso. Yes, uh, are you okay now? Uh... Yes, that is his concern And hopefully this can be addressed in your office, Being the head in the office. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Yes, Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Bala, inanila. Uh, naanaman, nankaroon kay nagpakanaog naman O proklamasyon ang atong presidenteng IPD 298 Kabahin sa paglip sa gitawag na'to ang State of National Health Emergency. Og naaman tay balaood pod nagsulti, May kamanduan sa provision sa Data Privacy Act nagsulti. Kung ang mga datos na atong gipang kolekta Base sa maong katuyuan, dabi kinawala naman ang kining Uh, sa COVID-19. Ang akong pangudahan na karoon, Mr. Bala, Unsa ako naman niyong himoon Para makasubay mo sa provision sa Data Privacy Act Sa katung mga datos ngayon na kolekta Na ibutang muntad dito sa Higala Ayak. Nagasalamat.
Thank you. Mau babay pagkuantaw niya, paglingkod. Gikan pa beses sa Human Resources. Tagaig time. Yeah, it's about, it's the same. When you will be, uh, when you will be assigned to a new office, Then you start studying what's best for the, uh, That the position that you are in now. Diliman siya gikan diha, gikan siya sa Human Resources. So let us be very considerate, no? Sa iyang position for now. Then probably along the way, Makita niyang difference siya, and then he can answer you. Tubaga nalagay Mr. Bala.
Napamoy plano nga inyong gubaon. Wala on tong mga data ngayon.
Wala maginna, di maginna gubaon, kung sa file.
Base sa kamanduan sa provision sa Data Privacy.
So what do you plan, Mr. Bala?
Planos sa City Mayors.
Uh... Tanaw na'to on, uh, canang ang plan, uh, canang ang mga data. Unsa ang mga data ang dapat Nastore na manggaling sa database, no? Uh... Diliman ato i-dispose ang data without, uh... Uh, request from the concerned person Ng atong i-nagnade, anang asertain data, Your Honor.
Correct.
So unsa nagstore dito sa atong database, so, as easy, ah?
Oh, diliman.
Why not, otherwise?
Otherwise, na-birus na. Anyway, Councilor Lourdes, are you satisfied? You're not satisfied? You let him sit first, sa iyang office. Yeah, okay. Councilor Lourdes, gaanay?
May napun ka na'to nan. Actually, binis sa City, nagcreate ng tag apps for the COVID.
Yes.
All data are, are, are forwarded to the DICT Sa national na nan. So wala kita delete. So, ang ako lang is, Samasagisulti sa atong Presiding Officer na Siguro na'y mga plans si Sir Norman. Tagal lang sagnatong siyang time.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Judith, para at least sumastadihan niya Kung unsa na siya. So, please, oh, dilin na diya. Pero wala tay actually na, forwarded tanan sa DICT.
Ah, ah. And I think the records that is in store, no? They do not delete it, it's still there. So, huh? Okay, sit down, okay?
Making him aware of the law.
You're standing. Anyway, sir, okay. Sir, we're giving you time To process everything sa ilam ang concern, no? And hopefully, this concern will be addressed Anytime soon, ang makalingkod ka, And you will find out na unsa gyo mga depikto along the way. And that try to correct And, uh, help, no? Help answer these queries that they are, you know, asking. Thank you very much, Mr. Bala, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Move to approve proposed resolution number 2023-477.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Uh, item number sixteen. Proposed resolution number 2023-478, Declaring Amadius Fernando Pajente, Also known as Pura Luga Vega, As Personano Grata in the City of Cagayan de Oro, For a Serious Disrespect and Maqery of the Christian Faith By portraying himself as the Black Nazarin Dancing to the remix of Amah Namin In a recent viral video. Subject to styling.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? Uh, manifestation. Councilor Michael Seno, you are recognized?
Thank you so much, Madam Presiding Officer. With the kind diligence of the members of the twenty City Council And of course, the Majority Floor Leader, Can we acknowledge also the one Master Sergeant Who have, uh...
Ah, yeah.
Finished the seven hundred kilometer run?
Ah, ah.
As, uh...
Congratulating, yes, yes.
Him, uh, nagpresent raway in town to dany.
Yeah, yeah, nalibtan lang, sige.
Thank you.
But you have not yet finished. Move to approve second, final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Uh, another resolution, uh, item number seventeen. Proposed resolution, number 2023-478, Commending and congratulating Sergeant Arnelpe Andalab Uh, for, uh, uh, For finishing and...
Seven hundred.
Taking the first place of the seven hundred kilometer mara, uh, ultra marathon. Mindanao Creasy Ultra Marathon. That would be the, uh, subject to styling by...
Subject for styling, okay. Any second? Uh, any objection? Objection? Councilor Roger Abadai, yes, you are recognized?
In addition with the, uh, proper resolution, Madam Chair, I would like to request the Chairman of the Sports Committee To include this person, uh, incentive awards Considering he is recognized.
The financial?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, the, to, to... The way, to ita, ato sa niiko ano, ato sa i approve, Dayon, another, uh, motion, no? Another motion is that Amay right?
Let me just include that, uh, in the, in the same motion.
I say motion, okay.